Hey Mike.
Yeah.
Could you do me a favor, since I had to switch to my phone, I lost my ability to see everybody. Could you do me a favor of calling on people as they come up to speak?
Yeah, the challenge is, I can only see five people at any one time.
Oh, okay, yeah, my computer usually lasts longer than this.
Yeah, I'm not able to get the full screen up. Let me see what I can do.
We can all together try and keep eyes open, that's okay.
Absolutely, yeah, great, thanks Dan.
Yeah, listen, thanks, yeah, just everybody just try to, you know, keep an eye on everybody and we'll just do our best not to speak over each other.
Sounds good.
Sorry for the inconvenience, I'll have to get a cord to keep here at home. Alright, I will do another quick roll call as we all get back in here to make sure we are all back. So, okay, so I'm gonna kind of scroll through, I see Mayor Pro Tim Kennedy. I see, oh, I see Councilmember Severs, I see Councilmember Langford, I see Councilmember Garcia. And I see Councilmember Dunn, and I see Councilmember Kurtz, and one more swipe. And Councilmember Foyer, okay, it looks like everybody is back. Again, sorry everybody, I had to switch devices. We're gonna do our best to manage ourselves and each other as we get to go through our workshop discussion on the ethics policy code of ethics and social media, so Councilmember Kurtz, I know you're the one who kind of had the request to put this on the agenda first, so I'll kind of turn it over to you and let you get started.
Okay, thanks, Madam Mayor. The reason that I wanted to have a special meeting on this topic, we have a lot of other topics coming up on some of our others, and I want to make sure that those meetings and those topics get their fair due in those meetings. But I've had some concerns about social media within our community, and I think that social media can be a very powerful tool, but the city can use to the great benefit. But over the past few months, I've observed that there have been a number of citizens who said that they're confused about how and where to find information. And more concerning to me, there have also been a number of comments about a lack of trust and confidence in the people who make decisions for the city. This seems to be allowed to perpetuate within the community, I think our community extends to our social network community as well. And I wanted to bring forward a discussion tonight with all of our council members and our representatives about how to improve communication. So the main goal that I have in bringing, main goals that I have in bringing this forward tonight is to give the council adequate time to, one, identify if there are any gaps or unclear language in our current ordinance. And two, to discuss as a city how social media can be used to increase transparency and confidence with citizens. In my opinion, the ordinance itself is silent on or doesn't address leadership and community building, professionalism and decorum, the importance of facts and consistency in use. And so those are some of the topics I look forward to hearing fellow councilmembers discuss tonight. And my goal again is to improve better communication with our citizens, and that is sort of my introduction. It wasn't meant to, me bringing this forward wasn't meant for it to be my agenda. I wanted to bring this forward for everybody to talk about.
Great. So I'm kind of gonna try to keep flipping.
So, this is Dan, I'll raise a hand.
Sure, go ahead.
You know, question Todd, is it possible to bring the ordinance 234 into the display? I'll let you work on that if you don't have that ready to look at. So, my objective, I guess, in the discussion is to really kind of focus on the policy that we have. And if there's some aspect of the policy which could be improved, or to perhaps can address what might be concerns in the conversation. When, I guess, I began in study of the current state of the policy, section 110-4. What I found novel when I got to the third paragraph, top page 5, I guess I'll hold here, Todd, is it possible to get that up?
Todd's not running the meeting, Jen is, so I think she's prepared to do that by working on it.
Cool. There's a word, there's a meaning and intent question, and I was looking for some guidance from Sean, if he's on the call.
He is.
Cool.
Was. I'm here.
Right on. I'll let the, I want to get the language out on the display so we can get it together just to read it. Section 110-4.
Is this what you're looking for, Dan?
Yeah, yeah, roll down to 110-4.
110-4, got it.
And, let's see, the paragraph that begins, 3, "It is the city's preference." And without having to read that for you, I'll just say, I'm reading in this paragraph that it is the city's preference that representatives of the city, what's the word, are strongly discouraged. Yeah, I'm reading the words, yeah, preference and intent represents not utilize social media to communicate in their official or employment capacity. And I reflect on that just a little bit, and I want to just, you know, quickly look around the council, you know, for gesture. Do we feel like the people who are the electeds and the, are not using, not using like Facebook? That's a question.
Dan, could you, I'm sorry, could you repeat that last, the question, Dan?
Do you believe, Mike, in that line, paragraph 3, that representatives of the city are not using social media?
No, they are using social media.
Yeah, and, you know, before, and I thought about that, and I wanted to quantify that. And I guess I'll pause for a second and say, we as a city, for public records consideration, must be able to quantify that. A summons could be issued, but I didn't get any time to try and quantify that. I don't know of a good mechanic to that, and I'm not going to burden the staff for it. But the question Sean I got as a clarification is, can you help understand why that paragraph is in this ordinance? Why should we not use social media?
Well, I mean, I don't think it's a question of not using it, I think my, my position was, if you're going to use it, use it in a manner that is directing it to city staff, individuals that may be able to address questions, city websites, city Facebook page. And I think that was what the intent was, or the thought process when the language was approved, and keeping in mind, there were several iterations of the code of ethics that the council at the time was reviewing and revising before they got to an approval of ordinance 234, so I think, I mean, I think the language that is, you know, is written, I think identifies what, you know, the intent of the council was, and what the, you know, what the policy was stating with regard to use of social media.
I just find it a little contradictory that we've got a statement of policy which is, by Mike's observation, not being followed. And if that's the case, perhaps we should either reconsider to follow it, or to strike that language in this policy. I'm interested in opinions, round room.
Councilmember Garcia, your hand up, and then Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you. Jen, would you please go back to the paragraph again, 1043, alright. What I also find curious, thank you, Member Dunn, it also says, "The use of private social media, excuse me, social media sites and tools for this purpose is strongly discouraged." And I know sometimes members might feel awkward when I, when I take one word and I decide to make that word relatable and keep it strong. I know we, many of us have private Facebook pages, on occasion we interject an emoji or two every now and again. But, Member Dunn, I think you're specifically talking about, and please give me clarification, are you specifically talking about when members of the council weigh in on issues that are before the council and engage in deliberative discussion on Facebook without the full-fledged open in public? Is that what you're relating to? Or in part?
My observation, I lend to it, yes, DG specifically, in that I believe that there's strong concerns for open public records and the utility of a private platform, and you use Facebook as an example. But I'll just make up the name of my own private social network. I believe that my communication to, I'll call it a community, in that private platform has strong concerns for the violation of a public record. The accessibility of that public record, and it defies the intent of communicating in public that we, as electeds, are obligated to when we speak directly. Assure that in no circumstance can anybody be barred from hearing or seeing whatever it is that I've said. That's my personal perspective, but more to point in the concept of the policy is, if this is a statement in an ordinance that we as a council are not adhering to, should it be removed? Or should we reconsider and adhere to it? That's a question.
May I follow up? Sir, then I would add to that, if, if after these discussions, that the council perhaps with the support of our legal attorney, make the language more to the point, a little more proactive in our responsibility to the overall public to define that we are wanting to make this open and public, and that perhaps somewhere within this framework that we, we can't make any decisions on it at this moment, but engage in really looking at that communicative piece which has a communications director that speaks on behalf of the city when they engage outside of the city's social media page, so that it's one voice. The message is defined based on the mayor needs to get something out, or a council wants to get something out. It goes through a communications director who would be granted the same thing as when, when Jen is asked to put something up on the networks for us, on occasion she's asked to put something up on the, on the Facebook page, and in essence, I'm saying, is that perhaps what we want to do? Make sure that we have someone who is on the behalf of the council, the mayor, putting things up there. People are confused, we don't want them to think we're taking a privilege away from them, or we're isolating them from the information. They're going to get the information, they will get answers in that vein.
I think the clarity of communication is important, DG, but my, I guess my primary focus is the utility of a statement in a policy. And truly, if that policy needs to be revisited by this group, I'll pick up on the notion that if it is the intention of this council that we should not utilize social media, then perhaps the language of this policy needs to be augmented and made a bit more direct. However, if somebody says we should really do social media, then I'd suggest that be struck. But I'm very interested in, thank you for your opinion, other opinions as well.
I had Mayor Pro Tim and then Councilmember Severs. If anybody.
Thank you, Councilman Dunn, for bringing that question up, it's a good question to get us going. So I hope for what I'm going to say is an answer that doesn't get too far off down another rabbit's path on it. I think we do need to look at this, it just makes common sense as we go along that we look at our ordinance and stuff, because we're really in the process of starting to do that, which we've never done for years past. But social media, my concern is this, is I have mixed emotion with social media. There's joy and happiness, and a lot of the happiness is what I don't have to deal with it. The unfortunate part of social media is that it is a critical part of getting information out to the citizens. So therefore, I am supportive of that aspect of it. Unfortunately, it usually goes down the drain within two or three comments. That my concern has always been this, is that we, the council, have a lot of talk always about being transparent and doing everything we can to be able to set up priorities that the citizens can go to our website, get the necessary information. I support that 100%, but I think that's where it fails, because I think what happens, individuals will take it upon themselves to say something on a particular site, and then council members, elected officials, all of us at different times think it's our priority that we need to deal with that. And yet we turn around and say, well, we need to direct them to our website. But we don't direct people to our website, because there's not information there that could probably deal with that. My recommendation would be for consideration and discussion in the future, is that if something comes up, and if the mayor or myself or any other elected official wants to respond to it, put that response on the city website, and then say in these, these sites, is that if you want to hear my response, go to the city website. Let's train the people to go where we keep saying we want them to go, and yet individually, we make no effort to help them get there. You know, the issue that's came up, but prompted this tonight, is what happened in our last Tuesday's meeting. And a comment from a citizen, who I've, I've had more comments since Tuesday from citizens than I have in the last four years I've been a council member. And I appreciate every one of them on it. Well, what was interesting is the individual says to me, says, "Mike, I went on the information site for the planning commission, and he pointed out to me that the last minutes were posted were for July 14th." So if we don't have the capability of keeping that information current for our citizens, and they go there, it only takes one or two times for them not to go there again, because they're not able to get that information. So if we have these avenues, we want to steer the citizens there, to there. Let's make sure that we, the elected officials, are doing everything they can to steer them there, and also the question. I got a, I got a text the other, on Wednesday morning at 3:35 in the morning, demanding that I give in writing, not verbally, but in writing, that how I voted. My response was, hey, I appreciate you contacting me, here's my personal number, call me, I'll be more than glad to explain it. It went downhill from there. But what's unique is that the criticism to the council has been this, we, the council, are not willing to reach out and give this information to the public. I have 12,500 people that I'm responsible for. The less than 500 on that site, of which the main ones were complaining to me, don't even live in the city. Now, I'm interested in what they have to say, because when I lived outside the city, I was a regular attending the meetings. But at no time did I ever say in a meeting that I was not somebody who lived outside the city. So if we have these policies that we say we want to be transparent, we want to get citizens the right information, let's direct them to our website. Let's don't take it upon ourselves, elected official, and especially in an election year, that we are the voice. Because it's the wrong image that we're giving out there, folks. Thank you.
Councilmember Severs, you're next.
I think these are great comments, I, I'm trying to circle back to kind of the, the problem here. And Councilmember Kurtz, I think you put it most articulate, that we're lacking clarity to our citizens. And if citizens are lacking clarity of where to get the right, or get official city information, that's probably what we need to focus on correcting here. I, I challenged some of the conversation around social media, because I, I think I don't, I myself, I've been on council for about seven years and 10 months now, and I don't know that I have a great understanding of where myself going and posting something on Facebook, as an example, is a problem. I, I understand the policy that we've got, but where is that, where is the line between me posting my opinion as an elected official, or as an individual, or as a citizen, differ from, from me posting something in official city capacity? And that, that, I don't want to place blame entirely on myself or kids. And I might place a little bit of blame on citizens for saying, well, that's just one council member that's saying that. And if, if I'm thinking about OPMA, the Open Public Meetings Act, and if we're, if we're diving down a conversation, I guess I want to caution about diving down a conversation about string meetings and Open Public Meetings Act. Saying, well, if one person goes and makes a statement on Facebook, there's no decision made there. If it was a string meeting, and there are four council members that are trying to make a decision inside of a Facebook thread, that's, I would assume that's a big, big violation. But if one person is making a statement somewhere, there's no decision that was made, it was an opinion that was put out by one council member, one elected official, and I'm, I'm thinking to examples outside of our city where state senator, state representative, they put out their opinions all the time, they put them on Twitter all the time, it's their own personal opinion, it's not, they're not directed back to the state, have the state come back and give a, give a Twitter message. I'm not trying to say we're trying to model after them, but I, I guess I'm trying to differentiate between where is it, or to my right as a council member, to say, here's my opinion, and I hold office, I was elected to share my opinion, whether the citizens hate my opinion and want to vote me out, or love my opinion and want to keep me on. It's, in some ways, I think, I've got a little bit of, and I'm, I'm saying this, I don't know that there are any examples of me posting things, there probably are, I have no idea, but, but I'm curious where the, where the line is between my right as an elected official to share my opinion, whether through social media, or standing up on a soapbox in the middle of town square, versus, versus having to funnel that specifically through the city website. And I, I don't know the answer, but I just want to throw that out there, that I don't think an individual council member, or individual staff member, or individual elected official in the city shouldn't have the right to share their opinion. And maybe that's where we need some clarity in the policy about, this is what differentiates you stating city business versus your opinion about something. Does that make sense? And I love, please, please shoot me down and tell me where, where I'm way off, if you disagree, so, but I'm struggling with that.
If I might interject, I think we might have lost, Chris might have lost the picture, and she might have lost also sound, honestly, I think she might be getting back on if she doesn't say something right now. So I can only see about five at one time, so as Councilman Dunn said earlier, let's keep it, let's keep an eye open for everybody who has their hand up. Let everybody speak who hasn't had an opportunity to speak, thank you. Chris, you back? No.
Odin looked like he.
We got Odin, yeah.
Looks like she's there. Okay, let's, let's continue on, anybody who hasn't spoken, you have a comments?
Odin.
Odin, you're.
Yeah, thanks. You know, one of the things that I've observed over the years regarding Facebook, any of the, the programs that are out there that are alleged to bring people together is that when someone posts a question, because that's all where it starts, Citizen A wants to know about something. So what they're asking for is, what is the definitive answer for this, whatever that is? So we have Councilman A jump on and give an opinion. Councilman B jumps on, gives an opposing opinion. Councilman C jumps on and gives a third opinion. And all this was an attempt to ask or to answer someone's question who wanted the definitive answer to begin with. So now, we got three opposing views, all by elected officials who forgot that two years ago they published an ordinance with the definitive answer on it. And now, everybody's in a tizzy because nobody went back to the official website to look up the answer. So we know that the ordinance was written as it is in an effort to bring that matter to a successful conclusion. If you have a question that's asked, direct them to the website, because that's official. If you want to give your opinion, you ought to check first to see if it's contrary to law, which an ordinance is. Because that makes you look really poor. Or perhaps you didn't like the ordinance, and you want to complain about it. So you pick your social justice platform and you bitch away. Well, that makes you look pretty lousy too. Okay, so what happens, in my estimate, is that you always retain the right to have an opinion. But you don't want to have the wrong opinion when there's people looking and watching and asking for the definitive answer. So, you know, if you wanted to say, you know, I looked outside and it looks like rain today, that's your opinion. But if somebody calls in and says, you know, what days does waste management pick up, and what's, what's allowed in the city of Lake, or City of Liberty Lake, might be a good idea for you not to have an opinion, but send them to the authoritative source. So, thank you.
I think DG's out there.
Great, I'm, I'm back on, on audio, I think I saw Councilmember Garcia's hand up, as I've been flipping through.
And my apologies, I put the reaction up in the middle of someone's speech, so my apologies. Member Langford, I was 100% knowledge of what you were saying and how you articulated it. That's exactly my sentiment on how I feel about the Facebook. However, as important as that is, when we're talking about open and public meetings, when I read some of these, and I know there might be 250 members, and as I've said not too long ago, is that you have to ask to join, you have to be invited to join, and then you, then you are there. But, again, there are 12,500 plus members in the community. Not all of that are speaking right now, some of them are too small, so they don't have an opinion. But there are so many out there recently that I've received a number of calls. And they looked up my number, and they called me, and they want to know this, that, and the other, and I've been very polite to tell them this item, this item is for public comment, open in public. This item is for public comment, open and public. I even did my homework and I reached out to our attorney Sean Bouts to get clarification. Because as a new council member, I don't want to make a misstep. I want to be as um, as as policy driven as as we see. And I want to not even encourage myself to do something that's against uh, the grain of our policy. But more important, everyone needs to know. And so I have always been an advocate, and many of you are advocates. Of making sure that people know. So because we see that we only have two vehicles. One vehicle is broken down because it's not used, and that's the city site. One vehicle was discouraged, but because it did not say um, they did not say it, the action was banned. That people are using that and some are using it as their own personal platform. And so when we decide to perhaps change policy. I could see in the future, people coming on saying they stole this person's right to communicate with us. Each of us have a responsibility to the same twelve thousand five hundred people, not one person, not two people, not three. And so perhaps we can add to our repertoire of getting to know this community. Is let's just stop thinking that a Tuesday, every other Tuesday is good enough. Let's stop thinking that a small soundbite every day is good enough. Perhaps we could schedule. Neighborhoods, because we have quite a few neighborhoods in our community. Neighborhood meetings where we actually go and there's a neighborhood HOA that's sitting there. And they're asking us questions and and they open their doors for anyone to come in. Or 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 we go, we travel, we're traveling salespeople. That are helping to teach, inform, and educate the community on what's going on, what happens on a Tuesday. Because if they're getting their only information. From a Facebook page, if that's the only place they get it, that's the only place they ask of it. Nine times out of ten, unfortunately, they're going to get half of the bite of the apple. And they're going to be angry because they didn't get all of it. And then we're going to have issues when all of us are trying our best. We are doing what we have taken an oath for. So maybe we should think of traveling, taking our political show on the road to help educate and inform the populace.
I apologize. I lost you guys again for a little bit. Um, who else? Zaymails have their hand up that I'm.
Q Severs?
I do.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um. Uh, Councilman Garcia, wonderful words. Um, I want to go back to what Councilor Langford said and just. DG, you you agreed too, but um. Odin, I think you were dead on. I think that there's a difference between when somebody's asking a question about a law. And when somebody's asking a question about an opinion. I I don't know specifically how to word it, but. Me, there's, there should be some way we could word in our policy that if a question is about a law. The elected official has the duty and must point them to that direction. Through the city uh, website or through calling City Hall, however we want to direct them. And if we want to add a follow on opinion. Uh, hey, there's an ordinance about this. Uh, you should go read the ordinance. You should go get information about the ordinance. If you want to call me, I'd be happy to share information about the ordinance or call uh, city staff about the ordinance. You should do so. My opinion is we should change the ordinance, but I mean, whatever my opinion is, it's a great ordinance. Um, I think there's probably a way in policy to be clear that. And 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 make it clear that it is the elected official's duty. That they must research if this is about a specific law ahead of time. I don't think that's outside, something that we could expect of each other. That we do our due diligence first before giving a random opinion. Not clarifying that there's already an ordinance or law about this. So anyway, I just, Odin, I think your comments are spot on that if it's about a law, we should. Point them that direction and let them know there's already a law about this. Um, and that would be in our official capacity. I would think speaking sort of on the city's behalf, even though one council member is not making a decision when speaking. That's only done as a group of four or more. Versus an opinion. So I I think there's probably a way, if we wanted to change the uh, the way the policy is written. I I would think that'd be a direction we might think about going.
I've heard a lot, a lot of great comments. If I just pipe in for a minute, you know, I'm I'm looking. Oh, sorry, Phil. I missed you on my swipes. Go ahead, Phil, then I'll jump in.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just have one comment. Um, as I read the line, it says, it's the city's preference and intent. To not utilize social media to communicate. And I got my good buddy Google right here at my side. And it says, what's the definition of communication? The imparting or exchanging of information or news. In my mind, communication is far different than in somebody's opinion. I believe it already says what you're asking us to do. If you're looking to um, uh, offer, if you're looking to communicate. The exchange of information or news, then refer to our website or offer the the uh, video of the previous council. Uh, video, whatever the answer may be, but an opinion is completely an opinion. And I don't believe, uh, as I read this line, that this precludes uh, anybody. That represents the city from having an opinion. There's nothing wrong with having an opinion as long as it's an opinion. But if you're looking to communicate information or news, then that's a different matter. So I don't see anything wrong with it as it is. Thank you.
Okay, um, so you know, I I love Annie when when you started off saying, you know, the goal is to improve the communication, improve the engagement. Because we we don't, we want to make sure we can keep that line of communication open. And I I think right now we have a little bit of a gap that I think we all are are looking forward to in twenty twenty two. Being able to add somebody on staff to hopefully handle some of this better. You know, our current staff is is trying to answer, you're trying to maybe watch some of the Facebook stuff. I know we have, you know, citizens who, as much as we direct them to back to the city resources, they just won't do it. Um, but I I I think we are on a good path to getting to to the place where we will have somebody on staff to me. Who can maybe be more on top of answering those things, you know, that that come uh, that come out on social media um, to ask questions about. Um, and I'm really looking forward to that. Um, the one thing, you know, and I I know I I I forget to do it, you know, a lot, though I try to keep my opinions. Um, off of Facebook as much as I can, because you're not going to ever win anybody over through a through a Facebook post. Um, but you know, we we all, you know, do it now and then. Um, but you know, the 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 simple disclaimer of, you know, this is, this opinion is my my own and not representative of the council or the city. Um, is, you know, is is or should be an easy thing for us to 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 add. You know, maybe we look at in the future, setting up, um, you know, a a an official council member Facebook profile for. To the council members. I don't know how it's going to go, but I I think we have a lot of tools. Lot more tools that we'll have available to us once we get somebody on board who might be able to be a little bit more responsive. And I'm not saying the staff isn't responsive, but it's just something, you know, there's other things going on. And and the main goal of the staff is not to not to watch, you know, the Facebook posts. So I think we have some some good progress through our our discussions tonight as as well as um. Hopefully some some staff addition coming early in twenty twenty two. Go ahead, Annie.
Um, thanks, Madam Mayor. Is there any reason um, we can't look at hiring somebody um, sooner? I I know we've had some people that have left. Um, and I don't know if if there's a budget budget amendment that's needed, but is there any reason not to bring something like that forward to? Um, address communication, not just as a uh, reaction to this, but um, generally, because you've been talking about needing somebody um, for the last few months. And I just wonder if there's the ability to move that forward.
Um, well, it it's just, let's just, let's just say it's beginning of October. You know, there, we don't have the job description. We don't have the salary. There's a lot of things that go into creating a new position. Um, then then and that will be in the budget that I present um, here in a in a few weeks, but um. It it won't happen until early twenty twenty two, assuming you guys approve the budget once it's added. Uh, Councilmember Dunn, I see your hand.
Okay, um, so in interpreting and gesture, that the wording of the ordinance as it currently stands is sufficient. If there were a case study set of examples brought forward in which an elected official or a city representative failed to follow the policy. A hearing examiner would be summoned to test the violation of this ordinance. I just want to make sure this is what we're interpreting tonight.
I think that goes to Sean.
Uh, yeah, Mayor, I I I believe, yes. Um, I I believe that the city administrator um, is the first step. In various places, and then to the extent that there's further review needed, then the hearing examiner would be the uh, decision maker after that.
Thanks.
All right, still looking for hands jumping if I don't see you. Go ahead.
Mayor, this is Council Councilman Langford. Uh.
Sure, go ahead.
In in relation to what Sean said, you know, I don't see anything in here that says it's the city administrator's responsibility to do anything with it. What am I missing?
Sean, back to you.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have the provision. If you give me a few minutes, I'll find the provision. I don't have it right this second.
Look at line item six.
Um, section one, ten, eight, paragraph one.
Or look at paragraph six that's up on the screen. I can read it if you'd like to, Mayor. It says, is the city administrator. Very responsibility to administer and enforce the provisions of this chapter with respect to social media sites. Tools that are owned or maintained by the City of Liberty Lake. The city administrator may cause categories of the official City of Liberty Lake social media applications, tools, or sites to be permanently or temporarily. Discontinued if they are not or cannot be using compliance with the policy. The city administrator shall excuse. Excuse me, shall exercise such dis- discretion in a viewpoint neutral, even handed, and non arbitrary manner. If representatives are aggrieved by an administrator's decision or enforcement action of the city administrator. They may request an informal hearing with a hearing examiner to challenge such decision or action within section one dash ten dash eight of this chapter.
Thank you.
Yeah, it sounds like to me that your only choices are to discontinue. Or permanently, to discontinue permanently or temporarily the tool sites, et cetera. So that's rather limited enforcement. Anyway, just a thought.
Question of clarification.
Go ahead.
I think that this uh, section six in the ordinance refers to the city operated facilities. It is not referring to um, representatives who are not using city tools. I I draw attention to um, and forthen clauses of the entire ordinance in section one, ten, eight. That um, anyone is invited to step forward with what they believe are examples of contradiction of this policy. Um, that would then require the summary of a a hearing examiner. I just want to make sure that's clear.
Sean, did you want to wait in on Dan's comment or not?
But not at this point. I mean, I I I I think, as I mentioned earlier, I I I'm not uh, privy to what comments or uh, information or. Potential statements have been made. And so until I have the opportunity to review that information, I'm not prepared to opine at this point.
Great. Okay, uh, Councilmember Garcia, I see your hand.
Thank you. Um, oh, Garcia, not Kurt, sorry.
No, no, Annie, I'll defer to you and then I'll come after you.
Um, I just wanted, I'm sorry, DG, I um, I just wanted to say that I think that I see a an opportunity to um. Make some small adjustments in language. So I think one of the comments that was made earlier is that if the ordinance is the way it is today. Um, I think that there are a few things that could be strengthened, if that's the way we want to go. Um, and then a couple of the things that I was still interested in in possibly having addressed, whether we can legally or whether the council wants to take that on. Um, refer to the professionalism and the decorum um, and fact based um. Fact based versus opinion. Um, I don't know what um, what our parameters are. Again, like I'm saying legally. Um, so I I don't think it's a thing that we can talk about tonight. Um, but I do, I would like to um, explore some different language in there. Because I think that everybody has the right to their opinion. I understand that. But I do believe that there is professional decorum for representatives of the city, and there have been some times where that um. Uh, has been lacking um, from my opinion. Um, and so if there's a way to encourage that and encourage community building and Liberty Lake together versus um. Anything that's contrary to that, I would love to be a part of it and suggest some language. Thank you.
Yep, Councilmember Garcia.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Member Kurt. I I I appreciate that. Um, uh, someone mentioned a disclaimer. And um, firstly, the people who own these sites, the administrators who own these sites on the Facebook page. They are entitled, one hundred percent entitlement to have the sites up. And they give, uh, they present the rules by which one should follow. And so we, I don't think, I do not believe that we're talking about um, destroying someone's page represent uh, um, character. Because when they put that out, then someone comments it. The the it that sometimes comes with it, it's not the responsibility of the person who developed the page. It's the responsibility of the people who are participating. And then the person who developed the page has their rules to exercise. You can't be here or you can be here. However. Um, as private citizens, we are all private citizens as well as public servants to the people. Um, and let's say we want to make our own personal comment. Perhaps we can adopt something within the framework of this policy. That is a disclaimer base that says the opinion that every time someone, a policymaker or an advisor. Every time they decide to say something on an official uh, in an official capacity about anything that's. On the agenda or on the table or being considered. Then perhaps a disclaimer that says the opinions expressed by me, whoever the B is. Are personal and in no way related to the city. Or members of our advisory boards or however it needs to be structured. So what they're doing. Um, and it's kind of like on uh, member Severs. I took from member Severs is saying, you know, I want to comment. I have a feeling I want to say something. And so go ahead, but guess what? When your name pops up, also this disclaimer pops up. When it has anything to do with city business. Is the opinions that I express are held by me only and not the city or its, you know, its operatives. So it gives people the freedom to exercise their right of the First Amendment. But it tells them that also now they're saying, this is coming from me. This is only coming from me. This is not the posture of the city, nor is it the posture, let's just say, the planning commission or the arts and parks. Because a lot of the information that comes out. Some of it is incorrect, some of it is misleading, and and we don't want to say they're doing it on purpose. But if they disclaim that that's their opinion, then the people that are being educated by all of this get to say. Well, you know, they're not angry. They're they're wanting and desirous of information, but they're not saying, oh, my God, I can't believe he did that. Oh, I can't believe she did that. They're doing that to us. Instead, it's, this is someone's opinion. It is expressed by them only. They hold it and then they move on and they say whatever they want to say.
I like that. Okay, uh, Mayor, back to him.
Uh, that, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I think this is a great discussion, what we're covering, but I also, I I really want to, before going any further, to say. I would be extremely disappointed if we end this discussion tonight without a clear, absolute direction of where we're going to go. For the timeframe to be able to get that accomplished. I appreciate what everybody is saying. I appreciate what the mayor is saying about shortage of staff and stuff. But I'll be honest with you, I get tired of hearing that after a while. Because, you know, I've heard that for years. We don't have the staff. We don't have this. We don't have that. But what are we going to do about? We don't have the staff. We don't have this. We don't have that. But what are we going to do about it? And when are we going to do something about it? Since January one, we've had five key employees that are leaving. And that affects the overall staff and everything. We're talking about adding additional things for monitoring, and we're struggling to be able to get qualified individuals to come in and fill these positions so we don't keep going over the same avenue of the whole time. The thing that concerns me is that with social media, to me, it's, it's the good, the bad, and the ugly. And unfortunately, in each post, all three of those heads surface sometimes, and that's disappointing. My largest concern is this, is that as elected officials and appointed commissioners, we have the right as any citizen to express our opinion and do it on social media. I have no challenge with that. But I think as elected officials and appointments to commissions, we have to think twice before we say something. And also this, what can happen to the motion of the moment, and I've been there, that it's easy to make a statement and not realize what we're saying or I have said is incorrect. The fortunate thing is if somebody can point that out to me, I go back and check the tape. I realize I made a mistake. I'm willing to come forward immediately and say, I made an error. This is what I intended. To be able to admit I made a mistake. My concern with social media, what's happened since last Tuesday, is the information has been given out, which is incorrect. And the challenge is for the city, somebody at the city, we need to have something in place when a comment on social media is put out there about fact, what the council is doing, and it's incorrect, and needs to be corrected ASAP. Because that festers. It festers. It festers. And individuals look at us down the road and say, well, I remember when this was said, and it must be true because no one ever came back and corrected that. Let's not keep making the same mistake over and over and over again. Let's say today, it stops today. Okay, we're accountable to ourselves and the citizens of this town. Let's do that starting today. Let's be accountable. Thank you.
Hey, I think I saw Councilmember Severs' hands up. And then Councilmember Dunn.
Uh, Mayor, for Tim, I I really appreciate your words. I, I agree with that, that, and I, I'm seeing this as maybe, maybe somewhat, uh, that we could, oh, I'm trying to remember the word Annie used, um, we could probably, um, beef up our, uh, our policy a little bit, make it a little bit stronger, I think is the term she used. Um, or clarify a little bit. I, I don't disagree with Councilmember Fullier that I think the way it's written, um, the way I interpret it is consistent with the way Councilmember Fullier read it. Um, but I think there may, may be some slight clarifications we could make in there. And if we did that, uh, hopefully, we could say, here's a line in the sand going forward. If you do, if you're making a statement about this, it requires a disclaimer. I, I personally don't really like the idea of a disclaimer. I, I understand the idea, but I, um, but frankly, if I'm giving my opinion, I think I've got the free right to give my opinion. Um, and I shouldn't have to put a disclaimer to give my opinion. But if it's about specific news or specific city business or a specific city ordinance, maybe there it requires me to add something about, go back to the official city website, go back to the city, you know, call the city and get more information about this. And versus if it's just my opinion, I, I don't see any reason I can't just give my opinion on something. Um, I think it's okay to clarify that our policy, uh, that, uh, that says, if I'm making a comment about my opinion, that's on me. And if I'm wrong, and if it's a terrible comment and a terrible opinion, that's still on me. And I'd hope that our citizens recognize that it's just on me, but perhaps some of, uh, the initiatives for next year, uh, on more citizen engagement, citizen communication will help our citizens understand there's seven of us and one of our opinions is not the opinion of the entire city. In some ways, I, I, I think that gets lost in our citizens. I don't know why, um, but I, I'm going to go back to my example that when I see an opinion of a state rep, I don't think that's the state's opinion. I recognize that's one individual's opinion. And that opinion may be from a Republican or a Democrat, and that's their opinion. I don't put that on the entire state. Um, but I think what I'm hearing is that we have this feeling that our citizens are putting it on one individual that that once you put something out on Facebook, that's the entire city's opinion. I don't, I don't want to entirely blame council or an elected official for doing that. Because to some extent, it's a citizen's prerogative to understand that we are seven individuals and we will put our opinions out. But I think that we could clarify through our policy that if it's specific about, um, city news or a city ordinance, city law, that we add some sort of disclaimer that says you are still acting in an official capacity here when you're talking specifically about an ordinance. And my hope would be that, that if anybody recognizes, uh, uh, foul play, that it go to our city administrator. And the city administrator then act upon that. And if it doesn't go there, then it goes to the hearing examiner that if there is, is there, are issues happening that we bring out, um, what the issue is? I just gotta notice that oh, sorry, I was on my, that was on my computer, not on, not on the, uh, uh, that if, if somebody's running awry from the policy that it, that it be dealt with immediately, no matter who is stating it, so it can be corrected going forward. I just, I, I can't, Mayor Proten, maybe this is in line with what you're saying. Don't like hearing, well, over the last year or two years or five years, there's been all these issues and violations. And why weren't they corrected when they happened, I guess, is, is my question. Um, dealt with then and decided whether or not it was, it was, um, out of order or was not. So anyway, that, those are my comments. I, I think we could probably, uh, strengthen the, the policy a little bit to just make it a little bit more black and white. If that's, if that's the direction of the council.
Right, Councilmember Dunn.
Um, point of clarification, uh, the, the role of the city's administrator. Uh, the city's administrator, I believe in this ordinance, is not policing elected or representatives' use of Facebook or social media. Uh, the city's administrator is policing the city's resources. So if there were to be an elected or a representative's improper use, um, that's not the city administrator's role. Just make one, want to make sure I'm interpreting that clearly. Sean, is that reasonably asserted?
I believe that's accurate.
Okay, so I mean, to, to q- question as example Hugh, if there were contested, you know, violations of this policy, this policy says someone must present themselves at City Hall and say, here is an example of a violation of this policy upon which a hearing examiner is summoner, summoned to make that determination. That's what this policy is saying. So I just want to make sure I understood, you know, clarifying the role of this administrator. I don't put Katie on, on deck to read Facebook all night. That's all I'm getting at. So, um.
Question of my comment, real, just very briefly, Dan. Thank you for the hearing examiner. I, I guess my point is less about the city administrator that if there is a violation of the policy, that we take proper action and, and deal with it right when it happens. I, I guess that, that's what my point was. And my understanding was it should first go to the city administrator. That's not, if that's not the correct, I do not expect the city administrator to be the one to police all of Facebook. I'd expect that when somebody sees a violation, they bring the violation to the proper.
But, yep, okay. Um, and then the second observation I'd have would be, um, lots of interesting observations about, um, okay, called characteristic subjective words like judgment or discernment or decorum and professionalism. And I'll just gesture that one man's professionalism is not another man's professionalism or woman. Sorry about that, to be clear. Um, and that those words imply, um, what hearing examiners are summoned to do. It is for that reason, in my opinion, that, um, I think that will not utilize or strongly discouraged words are used here. That it is very difficult or impossible, um, to try and use subjective words to describe what is good or not good. Um, and for that reason, then it is simply, don't do it. That's my interpretation. Um, I believe that, um, yeah, using subjective words or somehow polishing or refining subjective words uh, become very problematic because they're all subject to interpretation. Um, one more, I want to reflect quickly on the fact that a, in my opinion, we are called to a higher standard for communication and opinion, and that's public. And that if there is something useful or meaningful, it needs to be in public. And that any place that I write anything that asked me to accept an end user license agreements or to which I may be ejected summarily, is not public. And so, um, yeah, my opinion is that, um, yeah, posts in general into private platforms, regardless of their name, regardless of how popular or not popular they are, generally speaking, should be avoided. That's my interpretation. Thanks.
Great. Is there anybody else? I'm trying to flip through, see hands here. I don't, uh, Councilmember Garcia.
Uh, Dan, Hugh, um, I'm calling you by first name because we're actually talking about how we feel outside of how we lead. And that's important. Um, we do not want to police Facebook pages that don't belong, that belong to others who put them up in good faith to entertain information in and out. Whether it's, whether it's funny or whether it's sad or whether it's dreadful or whether someone wants to inform. Everyone who's got a Facebook page did it for a reason. They had a thought and they thought other people might be engaged. That's a freedom. That's a freedom I fought for. That's a freedom I fight for daily. I fight for everyone at any time that they want to, to express themselves as they want, irrespective of what happens to me. There is and was a lot of chatter about me personally. Um, some called, some reflected, um, and it was about me, my character. And my character to have done something against the citizens. So when we're looking at being governing bodies, we are also looking at our personal, uh, investment in these things. And I don't want to police anyone, but what I'm saying is we also feel we need to respond to things. We want to. And if our citizens think we're also tying the hands of each other, then they think Big Brother is bigger than Big Brother officially was because now it's holding back a council member's or a mayor ability to speak. And that is the reason I offered the, the disclaimer that says, these are my opinions. Because recently, we had someone who is a public official. And, 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 and the elephant is in the room. Is a public official. And that public official felt, as they say in the hood, some sort of way. And they wanted to air that information, and they were as entitled as others to air that information with one caveat. They held a bigger responsibility to that information than the people hearing it. And people went away with that as truth and lending, that everything that was said was accurate. And so while someone has a feeling when they act on it in a official capacity or a non-official capacity, but they are unofficial, they should still let the population know, this is my opinion. And don't take that freedom from them either. Don't remove the freedom of the council member to say what they do. I mean, I've read them all. I've read them from council members to mayors. And if we take away the freedom to speak and don't beef up, we should beef up our policy for ourselves so we hold ourselves to a standard that is a leadership standard. But we give everyone the idea that your freedom is not taken away because then that adds to the destruction. That adds another layer of removal of someone's right and privilege according to the basic principles of the Constitution. Now, I may be the oddest person to be talking about that because there are times when people say, well, so-and-so doesn't know the Constitution, so-and-so. Listen, it is all about the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. That's my name. That's my name of the game. And it's about people's privileges and rights. When we start removing those privileges and rights, we are not going to get the respect we're looking for, nor will people come. They don't come now. And they will stay in that pigeonhole and they will listen to their side, but their side must, if they are a public official, they have a fiduciary responsibility that anything they utter is factual. Nothing is misleading, and sometimes that does not happen. So give them the right to speak. Make sure they have, they have an a pit, a, a, a disclaimer so that the people who follow them understand, that's my guy or that's my gal. I'm going to follow them no matter what anybody says. But that person was still responsible to say, my opinions belong to me. We see it all the time. We see it on TV. We see it. We hear it on the news. People disclaim all the time. It's important. It's important that we beef it up. Because anytime we leave a loophole, someone's going to jump through the loophole. So we can sew it up by making it stronger using the language member Kurt's talked about, because that's important. And then we give people the ability to start saying, you know what? Maybe I need to contact the city and find out if what I just heard and what I just read is indeed all there is, and it's all the truth. That's how we make good government. That's how we make public and governmental relationship building. That's how we make it work. We set the parameters. We set the bar higher than we might be able to reach. But we can't keep setting it low because when we set it low, that's as far as people go, and that is it. Um, I can take the heat that's coming from some of the chatter. Rightfully so, people want to know. I can take the heat. Is it fair? I don't know. That's for someone who's throwing it out there to assess. But we also should take the responsibility. If we can't do that, and if tonight we can't come to some sort of consensus that we need to beef up this language, we need to be more professional, we need to raise the bar for ourselves, then we need to rethink why it is we feel we should have the positions we have. Because if we're just doing exercising brutality, then we may not be hitting the professional mark we want to hit. Thank you for your consideration.
No problem. Thank you very much for your comments. Um, flipping through again. While I'm doing that, I, and Jen, I don't have, uh, I had a hard copy, but I didn't bring it with me. I believe there is somewhere, um, well, I know there is. I just can't read off the top of my head where, um, it, the ordinance does, um, call out to use and, and Danielle, to, to your point about the subjective words, uh, it basically says, you know, you use the, use the same decorum or, or whatnot as we do in, in respect as we do in council meetings. Um, again, it's fairly subjective, but, uh, there is something in there that, that does address that. So let me, there, there's been lots of comments. Um, so I guess, let me start with this. Is there anybody opposed? Because since I can't see all the hands, is there anyone opposed to, um, having, um, city attorney take a look at, um, a, the shortest version of a disclaimer as we can get, uh, to still cover our bases and bringing that back for council to review is one action. To speak up if you're, if you're opposed for that. If not, we'll make it an action. Okay, not hearing any, and Hugh's laptop shut down. He's trying to rejoin us if he hasn't already. Uh, okay, so what action, Sean, if we, if you could help out with a, a, a disclaimer, um, for us to use? Um, that's one, one piece of this, um,
Here.
With regard, yes.
All right, so I understand you correctly because none of it, I, I'll speak for myself. I really haven't had a lot of time to dig into this uh, since it was just given to us yesterday. But are you implying that we have to have a disclaimer on an opinion?
Well, that, that's, that's been the discussion. That's why I'm asking, you know, for, for, um, sort of a hand, thumbs up or thumb down on whether or not we want to have an example, um, of a disclaimer brought back for review. Then we can discuss when it needs to be used or not.
I'm not in favor. I'm not in favor of a disclaimer, so there you go.
All right. So anybody else, uh, Councilmember Garcia?
Um, I I put that forward. Not because it is about our expressed opinion, but it is to allow the constituency that's following our information, whether it's good, bad, or indifferent, to know that what they're saying did not come from a board, a commission, or council meeting that they belong to. It allows them to say whatever it is they want to say. And they draw no one else into the conversation but themselves and anyone.
Well, and I know we have a.
I'm sorry, say that again.
No, sorry, Councilmember Garcia, my my my, um, my phone keeps freezing. I thought you were finished. Go ahead.
No, no problem. So I'm not saying that we're trying to police the council. We're just trying to advise the members. It's almost like a vote. When we're in, when we're in chambers and everyone is there who wants to come on the Zoom, what do we say? Thumbs up if you agree. Thumbs down if you don't. Well, what that disclaimer says is I, DG Garcia, put out a comment on a Facebook I commented on. That's my thumbs up to whatever the person said before me. Or that's my thumbs down, that I don't agree with them. It allows us to have the same uh, leverage that they have, but because we are public officials, we're not assembly, we're not Congress, we're not the United States President, and we're not the Senate. We are the city council, a local municipality, where everything we do impacts everyone out there, good, bad, or indifferent. So we have more of a responsibility to members of our community than than a than a senator sitting in Washington has to our community or sitting in Olympia has to our community. We have more responsibility. And that's all I'm saying. If ones do not agree with me, I encourage us to vote a particular way if we get that opportunity and register that because that too is what makes democracy work. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and I'll go to Annie, then Hugh, and I just will make a quick note. I do see some hands up from our citizens. We will have time for public comments, uh, when the workshop is over. Um, so Annie and Hugh, you can duke it out as to those first.
Go ahead, Annie.
Thank you. Um, Madam Mayor, if I might make a suggestion, I wonder if, um, I guess my suggestion would be, is it possible for us to, um, to Councilmember Foyers' point that this is, um, information they just got yesterday? And would it be possible for us to be able to review the document, send any edits to a a particular person at City Council so that those edits could be collated into a document, um, and we could review it at a future council meeting? That way it doesn't limit us to just the disclaimer piece, but if there's any other, like I've mentioned, strengthening up of a word um, here or there that we could do, we could make those comments, um, and then review them as a group, perhaps with already having Sean's legal perspective given to us. I think the mayor might be frozen. I don't know if she can hear me.
If she is frozen, then let me interject, let me interject this is that, uh, I believe what I'm hearing is that you're somewhat asking someone else's permission if we can do this. The council, we make that decision, what we're going to ask staff to do. We don't need the mayor or staff's uh, permission to do this. So I think it's a good recommendation. Uh, if the mayor is not able to get back on board, is there any other comments that somebody would like to say in reference to Councilman Kurt's comments?
Sorry, guys, I got dropped again.
Okay, great. If not, I was gonna say we go to Councilman Severs.
Oh, I think I think Councilman, uh, Councilmember Kurt's, uh, suggestion of maybe some policy edits on top of the disclaimer, um, are appropriate and then that we uh, circle back at a future council meeting and, uh, and discuss and I guess I just want to reflect on Councilman Garcia's comments and, um, Councilman Garcia, I think you've you've swayed me, um, and that I I agree with you that a disclaimer is appropriate at certain times. I would like to review the disclaimer. I I also agree that there there are potential edits here that could that could make this a little bit of a stronger, uh, policy with uh, less interpretation. And, uh, um, and my hope would be that the disclaimer would be part of, part of the policy and that there'd be times that we not have to give a disclaimer just for giving our opinion and times that we do need to give a disclaimer. I don't think that the disclaimer is needed every time we put an opinion out. I think a disclaimer is needed when we're discussing more specific city business or city ordinances, something along those lines. I don't know how we do that yet. But I would, uh, I I do think it's valuable, uh, conversation amongst the council in a future meeting to decide how we want to differentiate that.
Thank you. I'm sorry I got dropped again, Mayor Protem. And I will just note for the record, Councilmember Langford was not feeling well, so we can note that he, um, left the meeting at eight twenty-eight. Um, thank you very much for that. Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. Uh, once again, I think the discussion is very, very good. As far as I'm concerned is that I've never been attended a meeting where I don't look, go away from and say that was positive, that was good, we were going the right direction. But I gotta be honest with you. Is it, my recommendation is, we take what we've been given, because Councilman Foller made a very good point for some of them. They only saw this yesterday, or maybe they've seen a little bit of it in the past. I'm in favor of that we, uh, all the council takes some time to look at this, ascertain some of our recommendations, schedule the workshop at a seven o'clock meeting where we can give it some time, not a six o'clock, so we can look at this thing overall. A lot of things have been brought up tonight. But I'll tell you, I'm going to be very disappointed if the best thing we can come up with at the end of this meeting is that we're going to come up with some sort of a disclaimer. I mean, is there some credibility to that? Yeah, I would agree. But come on, we're talking about more serious things here than just do we do a disclaimer or not? You know, we got issues going on with individuals saying things and no one's taking any effort for the city to come forward to say, that statement's incorrect. Here's the fact. That should be a priority for us versus jumping into, jumping into a disclaimer. Let's get.
That was just the start of my of my summary. It's just so nobody misunderstands.
Thank you. Thank you. I still have the floor. I still have the floor. Is it? I would throw out, let's put, let's get serious about having a workshop on this. Give some time for council to look at. We got a lot of things going on with, uh, 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 the budget and things of the sort here. We may not get to this totally until after the first year. But let's don't think we're going to get, we're going to come away from this, patting ourselves on the back. We can only come up with the possibility of, let's look at some sort of a disclaimer. Let's correct the challenges we've got right now of misinformation being given out to our citizens. To me, that's critical. Thank you.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Um, Madam Mayor, I think while you, um, got dropped off, uh, my suggestion was to have a, um, the red line, like the online version of a red line document that we all can look at. We can make some suggestions and then to have that collated and brought back for a workshop. So, um, I just wanted to update you that on that since you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And I will remember to keep a cord at home next time. All right, so there's no other comments on that. Sounds like we will, um, take the next steps with regard to some red lines, find a spot to put it on a future workshop. So is there any other comments? Just go ahead and speak up since I can't see y'all. All right, okay. Well, with that, then we will go ahead and open, uh, the floor to public comment. Just a reminder that there is a three-minute time limit on each public comment. There will be a timer put on the screen. And we have Chris Cargill, I believe was first, and then Tim Olson.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, uh, council members. I I just want to read from the United States Constitution, which says, Congress shall make no law abridging the freedom of speech. I want to read from the Washington State Constitution that says, every person may freely speak, write, and publish on all subjects, and no local city councils, local county commissions do not have the authority to override the Constitution, no matter how much it may disagree with it. This council does not have the authority to require disclaimers. This council does not have the authority to regulate opinions or limit speech. This council does not have the authority, uh, to put something like this into law. And if 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 the city does that, it runs the risk of legal jeopardy. The city administrator does not have the authority or legal obligation or ability to shut down social media accounts. You cannot require opinions to be checked. There's a difference between personal accounts and the city's official accounts. And that is what I believe the ordinance refers to. It refers to city accounts. If the city speaks, the city speaks for itself. And if you want the city message out there, the city should issue official statements and or press releases. Uh, you want more dialogue that that has been talked about in past meetings? Let everyone have the same free speech. There should be no restrictions other than saying that you speak on behalf of the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Tim Olson, you're up.
Thank you very much, counsel. It's, you know, it's it's twenty twenty-one. I'm I'm kind of tired of hearing about the tech issues, by the way. So I just need to be to spend some AARP money or whatever to get this stuff fixed. But hey, I want to be able to make one comment here. Integrity is important. You're public officials. You're held to a higher standard than the rest of us. If somebody wants to use Facebook as news, well, I'm sorry, that's kind of what their reality is, but we need to have a higher standard. We need to figure this out. Elected officials are here to share their opinions, but I think that's a disclaimer is absolutely very much important. If you're making a comment on a public page, I believe you're going to be held to a higher standard. If you want to make a public comment or you want to make a comment to somebody in a personal message, that's your opinion. However, we should not sway the city and the employees and all these ci- citizens of our ci- city to have, um, you know, discourse over someone's opinion versus a fact. There's very, there's a very big difference. I think Chris makes a good point, but there's a very big difference between facts and opinions. I think we need to recognize that from the city. So, um, you know, I don't think we need staff to be able to recognize this. I said, I think we need to be able to set a standard for our our elected officials. And, uh, we cannot legislate morality. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jen, uh, I don't know if we have anybody else.
I am not seeing any.
Okay, just so one last call. If anybody else, um, wants to speak at public comment, we'll give you a moment to send a message in chat to Jen Camp, who is managing the meeting. Thank you very much for doing that today, Jen.
Welcome.
Okay. And nobody else?
Nope.
All right, um, great. If you want to slap the agenda back up there real quick, I believe we are at adjournment, but I just want to make sure.
Member mayor, a mayor, Madam.
Yes, ma'am.
Do I have a moment to to speak? Uh, can I speak this time? Thank you. Um, to Mr. Uh, Cargill's point, that is exactly right. No one can, no government can deny the person's right to speak. But whenever we speak in a public forum, we don't have to identify if it's our opinion because we're deliberating. Whenever we speak in a private forum, as was just done on Facebook, there was no identifying whether this member who was speaking was addressing us as a planning commission member or as a citizen when they were directly speaking in regards to planning commission business. And so that is the distinction. And, um, that is the only distinction because we have to be able for the people to understand what information they're getting and from what source. They have to have, they have to be encouraged to listen to the information, but you cannot come at it from both sides. Now, I believe the planning commission does a fine job. The Parks and Arts and the trustees for the library, they do fine work and they do hard work. So does the council. And so does the council. We cannot acquiesce. We cannot acquiesce to a few when we are trying our best to set policy for the masses. But we can continue as we do to invite them. This isn't about a war. This is about a connection between boards and advisors and the council. We have to stand for the information to go to the public and we cannot take up so-called defenses against each other. We are together in this. Now, when we speak as the member, Mr. Cargill, because he, um, actually his, his opinion came out as facts and it perhaps drew in all of the other planning commissioners. So we haven't heard, were they in line with what was provided? And that is the reason that I said the the disclaimer. It's not, well, DG wants a disclaimer and and she's going to get it if she want. No, no. It was about, he spoke. And someone out there who doesn't know the difference may think he spoke for the planning commission in total. And they did not have a consensus. So I think it's imperative that we make sure we identify ourselves. Will the real so-and-so please stand up? If you're talking on regards to planning, then they want you to speak on their behalf, then now you become their spokesperson. If you're doing it on behalf of the city council, then you become their spokesperson. I want everybody to have the same liberties. Speak all you want, say whatever it is, whatever it is you want. Trust me, I'm hearing it every day, every day.
Councilmember Garcia, if you don't mind, I I.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry. Yes.
It's really our policy not not to respond to citizen comment because it actually discourages it in the future. So, um, I apologize. I should have been been more clear as to what what the comment was going to be. My apologies. I didn't follow the follow the proper process. Okay, um, if there's no other business before the council, go in one, two, three, anybody? Hearing none, uh, we will go ahead and we will adjourn. Thanks, everybody, for your patience and for your contributions tonight. It was a good discussion.
Great discussion, guys. Good night.